I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission a regular meeting for Wednesday, February 14th, 2024. And before I call for a roll, I would mention that tonight we have Commissioner Peterson as acting secretary after the very unfortunate and sudden passing of our longtime Commissioner, Wally Van Buren. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson is here.
We have a quorum. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as long as you're standing, anyone who is going to testify tonight needs to be sworn in. So please raise your hand and anyone who's given testimony swear that any and all testimony you give will be the whole truth. Thank you. A reminder, everyone and commissioners, put your phones and anything else on silent Another reminder, anyone who testifies needs to sign in and we have a sign in out in the hallway and one at the podium. And we'll quickly review our public hearing procedures. First, the petitioner is introduced and comes and makes his or her presentation, followed by staff comments, and then the commissioners' questions, and finally the commissioners' vote. We have a village attorney here with us to make sure that any legal questions can be answered immediately. And with that, the next item is old business, which I don't believe there is any. We'll proceed on to new business. Under PCC 0472023, a request by Martinez and Navarette Holdings Limited Liability Corporation for Beauty and the Baker Limited Liability Corporation regarding the property located at 34 North Cass Avenue here in Westmont for the following: a site and landscaping plan approval. Who would address this issue for the... Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Marco Navarette. I am one of the owners of Beauty and the Baker. We're here to present, of course, the building that we purchased in downtown Westmont. I want to...I am the business holder and I have Jeff, who is my project manager, to explain more in depth of what the project entails. The building that we purchased is very old and we hope to rehab it, to have our business there. I am a local resident of Westmont. I moved away for college and I'm coming back home. We have an established business in Homer Glen and we hope to thrive here in Westmont. For the things pertaining to the business, again, for the project, I'd like Jeff to address it.
Thank you, Marco.
My name is Jeff Beatty and I was commissioned by Marco Beauty and the Baker as their owner's representative and project manager. So I'll be overseeing the entire process of the project from now all the way through our opening day, which we hope to be sometime late next year. No, this year.
This year.
Yeah, we're already in '24, aren't we? So late this year. The project at 34 North Cass is an interesting site. We're going to do basically a, what would be considered a gross demolition of the facility, except we're leaving the walls and the roof and the front partially intact. We're taking off a dilapidated addition on the back of the building. It was not indigenous to the original building in the first place and putting up an addition back there to recover that space. Part of our construction is to deal with the fact that the slope on Cass Avenue runs low on Cass to high on the alley in the west. As such, most of the businesses back there, you probably may or may not be aware, if you haven't been in those businesses, but they had different ways to get to the different grades in the front and the back. What we're going to do in our facility is, and I believe we're probably one of the first people to do it, is we're actually going to do a major redevelopment of what would normally be our backyard. And we would like to take full advantage of the improvements of the parking lot that's been put back there off of the west side. And so we're going to create a new entrance. It's still our back door per se. We have a front entrance, of course, but we're creating a new back entrance that'll allow patrons to use the parking lot rather than Cass and walk up and down Cass trying to figure out places to park. They'll be able to come in, park right there at the parking lot, walk straight into our back door, and come in and conduct their business. We think that's going to be a very advantageous thing for not only us as a business, but also for the village too, in terms of just trying to...we don't mind being the first person to be out there to do it. We think it's going to be great when it's done, and that's what we're looking forward to. We have several amenities that we're putting out there, landscaping, of course. We're doing permeable pavers for our driveway because we need a drive to service ourselves for deliveries. We will have an ADA compliant path all the way from the alley to our back door, and that will be our ADA entrance. There'll be bike racks addition adjacent to the entrance for people who are biking, so they have a place to put their vehicle as well. Landscaping, as I mentioned, we're going to demarcate the property as well with a couple of...just a little guardrail system on each end of our property, because I don't know if you're aware of the property back there, but it's all...everybody back there is gravel and they all kind of blend together. It's hard to discern whose property is whom's. And as such, a lot of the tenants and stuff tend to drive over other people's property to get to parking because all the lots are very small. So to avoid people traipsing over our brand-new landscaping and the other amenities we're doing, we're going to put up a small guardrail at our north and south lines where we don't have landscaping that will do the same thing. And the reason we don't have landscaping to do it is we don't want to totally blind our building coming down the alley once that landscaping gets to full growth. So we have sightlines that we're leaving. Additionally, I'm sorry. Additionally, one of the things we're doing, which is somewhat new, I believe, in that area, is we also will be including a full enclosed masonry enclosure for our dumpster for our trash. That'll be in a design that's compatible with the building. We'll use the same materials that we're using on the building addition for the masonry enclosure as well. On the front of the building along Cass Avenue, we are doing some improvements on two-fold. One, the main driving reason for any improvement is to adjust to the floor elevations that we need to adjust to because of the property being sloped, as I mentioned earlier. So we take up all the slack within our building. To do that, we're going to be raising the floor as part of the renovation in our building. We'll be taking out the combustible wood floor, putting in a steel and concrete floor. And in doing that, our new floor will be at about the level of the limestone sill that's there now at that building. So we're going to raise that sill up and do a new masonry detail and another secondary limestone sill, all new fenestration, insulated glass this time instead of just straight single-pane glass. So we'll use insulated glass. And then we create an architectural detail to separate the entrance from the display windows. So the entrance, the way it is now, the building is in the midst of...well, it suffers from probably about a mid-'70s renovation, judged by...judging by the architecture. So we're going to try and soften that up a little bit, bring in some more brick, bring in some limestone. We're going to recreate a second pillar to match the end pillars on the building and put our doorway in between that. So our doorway is actually in a framed masonry opening, not part of a storefront system that you would see like at a Kmart or something like that, or even at the building the way that it is now, for that matter. We also intend to put in signage. We're working with a signed contractor now to develop our signage on how we want it to look on our mansered. We'll tuck point the building entirely on the front. And also, we're going to rectify the environmental condition that's etched away or discolored that mansered that's on that building now. It's an anodized bronze finish on a tin roof. It's a pre-manufactured product, very popular in '70s and '80s, but pollution eats away at it. And if you'll notice, the southward, the south side is worse than the north side, and that's, again, because of the way the weather flows. But I've been in consult with Art Painters, Celtic Painting, and they've come up with a process for us to be able to rectify that when we repaint it. So that'll be part of the process as well. We're adding some downlighting out front. The building had no outside lighting in this office before. We're adding some downlighting and we're going to install it in a strategical way so that should we decide to pursue the vertical signage, which is the new ordinance that's allowed now in the historic district, should we elect to pursue that, we'll have lighting properly set up already in place to do that. So, there's any other questions?
I'm sure there'll be some questions from the commissioners. Staff comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll get technical now. This is a fairly simple project, at least. It's just a request for a site and landscaping approval. So this is an existing building where they're making changes to both the front of the building, the inside of the building, and the rear of the building. A little history on the guidance that the petitioners received from staff is when the village bought and installed the parking lot off of, I think it's Lincoln back there, we always were trying to figure out how we can encourage the businesses to make the backsides of their buildings a little bit more attractive, because it is met with an alley and gravel area and backsides of buildings that were never designed to accommodate people. So this is the first time that anyone has approached us and said, "Well, wait a minute. We do want to make improvements back there because we want to take advantage of the village parking lot." And we've got other issues with ADA accessibility. We think we can accommodate them from the rear of the building rather than the front of the building. And so they worked with staff, and when you look at the elevations, you'll notice there's a bit of a hip roof over that back door. That's so you can signify entrance so that when you're in the parking lot, you can see that there's an entrance over there. They are putting the garbage in a garbage corral and a garbage enclosure. They're adding landscaping when you look at that drive that they need to service the back. That's for deliveries and also so that they can take their baked goods and put them in the truck. But we have a clearly designated concrete sidewalk that is next to that so that you're not walking in the drive, and it is accessible for someone that's parking there. And then they're adding bike racks, and I don't know if you're still doing it, but their initial idea was some cupcake-shaped bike racks in order to let people know that it is a bakery. So they are making a lot of the efforts to try to turn the backside of the building into something that is much more pleasant, even acknowledging that, you know, the mechanical equipment on the top of the roof that might still be seen because it is the backside to try to paint it or adjust as necessary as they go through the construction process. On the front, to a layperson like me, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of change, but actually they're making significant changes by moving the doorway, adding the brick details in order to get that second entrance.
Say that again.
They are making significant changes by replacing all the glass, replacing a lot of the brick, moving that entrance over to the other side. I just said that for anyone that's looking at it, it looks kind of the same with the door moved, but it's actually a pretty significant change that's occurring there. So that is the basic of the site plan approval to accommodate this bakery. The bakery actually did get its B1 approval, which is that permission to be in the downtown, I'm going to say, almost two years ago. Yeah, so it's been quite some time, and the petitioner found that the building needed a lot more work, I think that probably was anticipated, and they want to do it right. The last piece of this that is new for planning and zoning is we created, it's called a downtown incentive program, and that is replaced an old facade and life safety grant program. And they will be requesting money from the board for that. Now, it is not the planning and zoning's role to assess whether or not they should be awarded money. However, our role is, does this...do these new elevations in site plan fit within what we see in our downtown? So basically, we still have commercial design guidelines. We still have the comprehensive plan. So basically, if we're happy with it and we approve it, that gives the board assurance that it meets the conditions that are expected in the downtown. So that's really the only consideration. That's why we included some information on the grant that they will be applying for. But they would be eligible for the maximum dollar amount because they are doing the things that we requested to get the maximum dollar amount, such as brick and stone details, lighting, architectural detail on the building itself, addressing fire and life safety issues, and addressing ADA issues, because if anyone knows, a lot of our older buildings in the downtown are not ADA accessible. So they hit many of those marks that get them their maximum grant request. So as always, I can answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to question or comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Lavoy, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Of course I do.
Good.
First of all, the plan looks very well done, and it's unusual to see a baker come to town, welcome to the town. But I just...what didn't come across in the presentation was the nature of the business. Are you pretty much commercial-oriented? And who's your client base, or you have walk-in traffic and...
We have a very small store, and throughout the years, we expanded to a storefront when we purchased it. So we did a lot of big events, so like weddings, birthdays, and stuff like that. We want to have like an old-style fashion bakery. So we were planning that larger storefront, those large cases with baked goods. We want to stick to that model because it's something that we deeply want to see, something that's community-oriented, where people can come pick up some donuts for, you know, their job site, coffee, or something of that nature. We will still do those larger events like weddings because Michaela's specialty, it's something that we love doing, is for those major events. But we plan to stick to that type of commercial zoning.
Will there be any like coffee or anything where you can come in and you can get...so you can get coffee? One of the things that kind of struck me about it was that there was nothing on the plan, on the landscape plan, that necessarily shows any outdoor seating. I was wondering if you were planning on that or not.
The outdoor seating is twofold. First of all, we want to see how the public reacts to the business and see if the public actually calls for that. Because of the fact, we also don't want to pass on your city tax for seating and turning it into a restaurant. It's really designed to be more of a grab-and-go business.
Okay.
So unless you're in there to meet specifically with Michaela, because it's your daughter's communion, and you want to make...have a beautiful cake for her done by a fantastic master baker, then you're going to want to stop in there and get a pastry, a scone...
Right, right.
...one of their teas or a latte or something like that, and it's on to the next place of business I'm going to. I'm going next door to Pilates. I'm going to grab a train. Or I'm just going downtown because the Great Bakery in Westmont's down there and I'm going to pick up my stuff.
Yeah.
And so I'm going to park in the back...park back in the parking lot in the back because I know I don't have to worry about traffic on Cass. I can walk right in the back door, get my stuff, and go.
That leads me to my next question is how does a pedestrian travel from that parking lot on the landscape plan? It doesn't show like there's a walk or anything?
Yes, there is. If you look at the driveway plan, you'll see a hatched area.
Along the south side of the driveway.
And then on the south side of the driveway, it's not hatched. That is a concrete walkway that is tied into the driveway. Can you guys get this? Oh, there it is. And the concrete driveway...there you go. Yes, that's it right there.
Yeah, I get that.
Right, so the north side of that is permeable pavers. That's a nine-foot-wide drive, and then you have a three-foot-wide concrete sidewalk.
My point is, they would have to walk all the way to the alley, right? And come all the way up that walk.
Right.
Is there any way that you could just kind of make it a shorter route for a pedestrian to travel to your establishment?
Pick up the building and move it 70 feet?
I wasn't meant to be sarcastic. I'm saying that...
No, no, no. Well, actually, pardon me. I'm not trying to...
If you park in the parking lot, you have to walk to the alley and then walk down to the concrete, down the concrete walk, correct?
Right, it is. Yes, it is a concrete walk, yes.
Not that far.
The alley's straight out my back.
Yeah, there's parking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, forgive me.
Okay. Yeah, I get that. I understand what you're saying and...
So this is the parking area here.
Right.
We're having...our walkways here lead right to our door, which is...will be in this corner, actually, about right here.
Right.
In this corner of the building. It is about a 70-foot walk to do that. That's the distance of the backyard. Without extending the building, there is no parking on this property because the parking is not wide enough for parking, other than the parking that can be done on the driveway.
Is the parking to the north...
It's all your parking. This parking here, is this city parking, Joe?
The north.
No, that actually belongs...that lot up there belongs to the mosque, I think, that's across Lincoln.
Okay, all right, yeah. We were never thinking about...this is the parking lot as well. Yes.
But is the parking lot directly to the north of your site where those three cars are?
It's not parking lot. That's my neighbor's 30-foot-wide lot.
They don't have any kind of connection, correct?
No, no. And actually, to get these cars parked here, he has to drive over my lot to get them there because you can't back up and park a car that's 18-foot-long at an angle on a 30-foot-wide lot and drive them.
So how is that going to work for the neighbor's cars to get it out of there if you do it?
They'll be able to bring them straight in. They'll be able to bring them straight in. They won't be able to park them on an angle. Well, they might be able to, as long as they know how to drive.
But they would have to back out in that condition, yes?
Right, right. Yes, I would think that that would be the situation. We have to back out as ours as well, same.
Okay. Was there any...
Also, I want to point out too that that walkway, sir, is lit too, if anybody's wondering what do you do at night.
Well, that's my next question is the site lighting.
So it's well-lit all the way from our property line, the alley, all the way to our building.
Okay. I have another question.
And the alley general illumination picks up the alley.
That was my last question about site lighting.
Commissioner Lavoy, if I can respond to the outdoor seating. So that was one thing that staff asked pretty early, like, do you want to have...like, you'd make it more inviting if you had a couple cafe tables.
Yeah. You have the sidewalk to do it.
At the time, basically, having those couple tables turns it into requiring places for eating tax on all products. And so at the time, they said, "Well, you know, we kind of want to be a grab-and-go, and it's an additional tax just to have a couple tables outside," and it's taxing all of our products that we have to pass that on. So at the time, they made the business decision that they didn't think that the one or two seats they might get outside was worth that, so...
We did really want to have seating. We had to make sacrifices when putting in that walkway to use the back alley for the parking because to make stuff from scratch, you have a lot of equipment, a lot of space. We cut down our kitchen as small as we could to still function and give all that scratch baking, especially with that hallway that only can be utilized as a walkway. It's a lot of square footage used that could have been used for kitchen.
Yeah. Well, what really has generated my questions is, it's really not described in the application like that northerly parking lot. Is that exclusive? Is that private? Because it does look like they use your property to get there.
Well, everybody just kind of drives around willy-nilly back here, wherever they want to go.
I get it. But with this improvement, I want to know if we are being an obstructionist, if you will, to the neighboring property. That's what I want to know.
Well, and I believe to some degree, yes, because everyone kind of shares everything back there at this point, because with all that gravel back there, no one can really discern where property lines are.
Yeah.
And that's why they put guardrails on each side of their area because they're worried that the first snow that comes through, someone's going to drive right through their area. So that's why they feel like they need the guardrails back there. So it is a bit detrimental to the neighboring property, but the neighboring properties don't technically have rights to access, you know, their property with their parking, so...
And the reason, if I could add, the reason that we're looking at guardrails rather than a full fence, ornamental or otherwise, is we were looking for it to be able to demarcate our area and to keep people from traveling over it, but we don't want it to be so obvious with a big fence there. So the guardrail's only this high.
Yeah.
It's only 18 inches.
It's a barrier.
And by the time it's landscaping, it's planted around it, you won't really know that it's there. Getting again...speaking again to the seating and getting into the space and seeing what the customers want to do, the...I don't believe that the answer is in yet as to whether or not people will enjoy even as well as we're going to do the backyard, sitting in essentially still an hour, because the views are...once you look past our property, there's nothing to look at. So I don't know how much time it's, you know, time people would want to spend down there. It'd be a perfect place for them. We're not denying that. But right now, up top, we're not...we're going to go with that. And hopefully, it'll work out fine. And obviously, a good business has to meet the needs of the customer base, so we'll see what they want.
Joe, has the village received any kind of objection to the configuration in the rear as part of the public hearing?
There are...we have not received anything, but it is technically not a noticed, required event. So when it is...when it is something that requires a public hearing, there's a sign that's placed on the property, we publish a notice in the newspaper, and then we mail something to all the immediate neighbors. This is not...this does not require that because it is just a site plan approval. So the only notification that was given to anyone was that our agenda, which is on the village website.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Sure.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Love the name, by the way. Commissioner Lavoy asked a couple of questions that I had, so I really don't have any questions. I think it's great. Hope you guys thrive and do well there for many years. Sounds like a nice project.
Commissioner Berry?
Thank you. First of all, it's great that you guys are coming from Homer Glen to Westmont. That's always great when anytime we can take a business and move them here. And I think this goes along with the plans that we're seeing in other communities. I know Downers Grove has a lot of rear entrance. I think they even have a bakery or their dog bakery, I believe, downtown. So I think that goes with our long-term plan of developing Lincoln and Linden as we plan as far as the downtown. I do, you know, as we talk about the alley, the alley is for deliveries, as you say. You know, that alley will...can be blocked by beer trucks. It can be blocked by anything. So I can't see where outdoor dining in the rear would be appealing. I agree with your statements there. But I also remind, as a person who owns a business on the alley, the alleys are for deliveries. So there's going to be times when, you know, there's going to be a beer truck there and there's going to...you know, the pedestrians are going to have to either walk around that or make other, you know, provisions. But I would just say that that's something that you can't call the village and say, "Hey, you know, we're..."the alley's blocked," because that is the purpose of that alley, is for deliveries. It can be blocked sometimes even for an hour because, again, it's versus Cass Avenue. So that would be the only thing I would point out, but I really like the plan. I've read the packet and the drawings, and I really wish you guys success here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I like it a lot, and the back, I like it an awful lot. Some thought has gone into it, and I agree with you. Welcome.
Commissioner Peterson?
I am be first in line on the day that you banal. I'm really...
Don't knock me down. I'm a pretty big guy.
I'm really excited about this. When our bakery left years ago...
The one that was...
Lindstrom's? Yeah. I mean, I grew up going to that bakery, and I got my wedding cake at that bakery, and, you know, and I really miss it. And then we had a fairly good bakery in Downers Grove, but unfortunately, that gentleman passed away from COVID, and they closed that bakery. So a bakery in town, I'm so psyched and the plan. And the only one thing I don't like about the property, and I know you guys are spending a fortune doing everything, you know, is that is the front facade part. I've never liked that, you know?
Give it a chance when it's done.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think with the lights and signing and everything else you're doing, it's going to totally...and like you say, that nothing has been done to that building forever. So I am really, really psyched about this, and I think you'll do really well. So I am really, really psyched about this, and I think, I think you'll do really well. So welcome to Westmont, and.
Thank you.
Like I say, you'll be seeing me a lot.
Thank you.
Get in your specialties, Michaela will have it ready for you when you're waiting.
Couple quick questions. I'm trying to envision the step up from walking into the front door, would there be one or two steps up?
There's one step at the door, it'll be signed right at the push bar.
It'll be a step up into the new floor.
Step up, okay, it'll be one step up, it's only a six-and-a-half inch step. You'll open the door, you handle landing, you walk through the door, one step, one step, and now you're on the floor.
And then when you get to the rear, well, someone coming in from the rear.
The other end, it's dead on flat.
So someone coming in from the rear, are they stepping?
They never step anywhere.
I see.
All the way. The percent of grade is 0.8%. ADA, comfortable grade, is 5%. So we're very flat, very flat.
Okay, and, so I don't know how wide this is between the two.
Our property's 30-foot wide.
So it's 30 feet back there, including the dumpsters and the driveway.
Our driveway's 12-foot, the sidewalk and the driveway combined is 12 and 1/3.
Your snow removal, where would come in with the blade and pull it back away from the?
We'll pull, and then he can push out from the end if he wants to, right. Deposition, wherever they're putting the alley stuff, I'm not sure where they're putting the alley stuff, if it just, I haven't been back there during the snowplow. We will have area at the very edge of our alley, where our property meets the alley, where we stop our landscaping short to pile snow right at the edge, if that's where we have to pile snow. But with permeable pavers, hopefully, unless it's a real heavy snow, if we get a little sunshine, it's not going to be such a big deal.
As much. That's no issue, right, with the village, the snow removal and?
Well, I mean, snow removal is always a question mark on a lot of the things we look at, but it was not a priority to ask them to create space for the snow removal.
Let's see. Commissioners, any other comments?
You bring up an interesting point, Doug, with the step, and it was in my mind, but I assume steps, and I guess maybe this is to you, Joe, more than them. How is it a project like that goes today and then no ADA off of CAS Avenue?
You're asking me to answer a question that I'm not an expert in, so I'll try to do the best I can. So because there is no parking lot, so the ADA requirements, and you know better than I do, really get invoked with parking laws. So there's nothing that says that the CAS Avenue side needs to have ADA.
I see. And he checks the box on his rear ADA?
Yes, and he checks the box there. But think, if I'm coming to the bakery and I need ADA, there are no ADA spaces, I don't believe, in front of this building. So it's more convenient to park in the village lot behind and access it that way. So I believe that's the way they were approaching it.
Right, our feeling is, is people who have special needs know how to seek out the areas that are open to them, and they'll know how to get around real quick. And yeah, it's, to be able to be, have the front door to be accessible, and not have an accessible path to get to the front door, which is the problem with CAS Avenue.
It's a problem with the ADA rules in general, you know.
Right, so the building can be as compliant as you want it to be at the door, but if I can't get to the door, it makes no difference. So that's why we went to, the way the elevation is, is it helps us that the elevation is higher in the back, in this case, because we actually minimize. Right now, you go down four steps to get onto our floor in that building. From the outside in the back, you go down two stores outside, and then two more stairs inside. And when you get to the front of the building, you're still six inches above the sidewalk, okay? So to alleviate that, we've been able to work it out with the grading and everything, to just eliminate it to two steps inside, one step outside, very comfortable steps, so that people who are, you know, who are not necessarily need a smooth path, you know, maybe they're a little shaky, they don't like to do steps, but it's small steps, they can use that entrance if they want to. But it's been my experience in having, you know, a relationship in my family with somebody who is in a wheelchair, they know where to go.
Yeah.
And they'll stay away from places that are not open and available to them, okay? And that's the last thing we want to do, is try and exclude anybody. So we think it'd be very advantageous to have.
I just find it surprising in this day and age where we see, you know, sidewalks and everything that are, everything is compliant, it just, it was, but educated on it, so thank you, I appreciate it.
It's very difficult when a 100-year-old village try and keep up with the changes.
Yeah, we understand that, and so again, just thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lavoie, you have a question?
Yeah, I'll make one of the comment related to this ADA, since I'm a little bit knowledgeable of it. The real question here is that if the village perspective and the planning that has been done for downtown in relation to the parking in particular, the parking lot that we just built does not have an ADA space in it.
Yes, it does.
I don't think so.
Yes, sir.
Not in close, not.
All ADA spaces are on.
They're on that side.
South side.
I believe there's four.
If I could finish.
Yes.
Okay, but it does not have any spaces that would, that would meet the ADA of being the closest spaces to the entrance.
No, they're closest to the sidewalk, I believe, for regulation.
They're closest to the accessible path. Now, you don't have to choose the accessible path if you don't want to, because you can go across the parking lot.
I'm just saying, maybe the village should look at that to convert a space to the other side, to the east side. That way, they're the closest to their entrance, and that way, anyone that is handicapped and wants to go to the bakery could park in that space.
I can absolutely bring that up with Public Works, who's managing that parking lot.
I would also just remind that that alley could be blocked, so those people would have to use that sidewalk anyways, you know, that, again, just as you're hearing me drive home, an alley is for an alley, you know, that, it's, as nice as we have them, they're not meant to be pedestrian-friendly always, you know, so.
Ultimately, that's why it's advantageous to us to take advantage of this opportunity, because we're the only business that's straight across from the drive. So we don't have anybody that needs to travel up and down the alley to get to our property. They come out of the parking lot, they go straight across the alley, right into my property.
Unless the alley's blocked.
Right in front of my business.
Unless the alley's blocked, then they would have to take the wheelchair, you know, around Lincoln, down Irving, and then, you know, so.
And Commissioner Berry, I think in the beginning when I spoke, this is, this is not easy for us. This is the first business that's making the effort. You know, we had many discussions about, okay, you're putting in landscape, that's great, is it all going to die because it's gravel everywhere? Is someone going to drive through it because there's gravel everywhere? So we tried our best to accommodate the first one, and hopefully, this gets easier with every other business that makes investment in the back of their property.
That's a great concept, and I like the idea, and I'm with you. I'd park in that parking lot, and I'd walk across, but again, just, just questions about the ADA and how all that works, but thank you for the answers.
Okay, Commissioners, any other input? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion to approve PZC 0472023, site and landscaping plan approval for Martinez and Navarette Holdings, Beauty and the Baker.
Motion, Scales.
Have a motion.
Scales?
Scales?
I'll second.
Second, Lavoie. Questions, discussion of the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes.
Well, there you have it, folks. You have our recommendation to go forward. Staff will tell you when you'll be scheduled to appear before the Village Board, who of course has the final say-so.
All right.
Good luck. Next item is open forum. This is where anything that is not on the agenda, that the public is welcome to come to the podium and address the commission on any subject they wish to address.
Certainly, certainly.
Of course, yeah, well, you're absolutely welcome. Moving on to a miscellaneous, Senior Planner Williams, would you like to talk?
I'm going to update the nameplate, but yeah, thank you. So our next meeting, I don't think you mentioned, is March 13th for planning and zoning. We are looking at changing the time for these meetings to 6:00 PM. However, we're opening up for discussion. We're going to send out an email to see what everybody's schedule looks like. The reason being is currently our Village Board meets at 6:00 PM. We've had meetings run pretty late, as of late, and we want to be able to fill the agenda and not run into those issues in the future. So we're just going to open up a discussion for that, and you'll be seeing emails. So if you don't have access to your email, let me know. I know we had some issues earlier, so.
And as the chairman just pointed out to me, since if it's an email to the entire group, please make sure you respond just individually to Scott, because we don't want to have a virtual email meeting in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
It'll either be me or Jamie Hoffman, our administrator.
And we're pretty consistent that we don't send it to everybody, we blind copy everybody so that they can only email us back.
Perfect. So.
Jamie does a great job of getting a hold of all of us, I know she will.
So I think we're just, if anyone has strong opposition to it, we know that some folks have jobs, and it's not always easy. Where we, we just, it seems like if we get three agenda items, you know, then we're going pretty late, and we're trying to remedy that, so.
The Board meets at that time, it's easier on staff, and, you know, I'm a big fan of it, I'm a big fan, so.
Okay, and since I'm speaking, so yes, we did promote Scott from planner to a senior planner, and so you're going to see more and more of him, and because I was promoted to the Community Development Director.
Congratulations.
Basically, I reluctantly am handing over most of the planning and zoning duties to Scott, because, you know, I love being here, I love your questions. And you will, you will still see my involvement, you know, on the larger projects, you know, so I won't be gone completely, so.
You go me first, I got to ask them.
And before I call for a motion to adjourn, I'd just like to point out that Commissioner Van Buren's funeral on the 5th of February was very well attended by representatives from the village, and it was very emotional, it was very, very complimentary to Wally's life and his career, and, and he will certainly be missed by us and by everyone.
Amen.
And with that, Doug, entertain the motion.
I have one question.
Certainly.
I know we didn't have a meeting last month, but there was no minutes from the previous meeting?
Yeah, we'll have the minutes for March, for both this meeting and the December meeting.
Okay, just curious.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Scales.
Second, Berry.
Second, Berry. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this meeting.